Good afternoon and welcome to the January meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum, so I call this meeting to order. Each of you should have received minutes of the meeting from December the 17th, and I'm sure you've all read that. Are there any necessary edits or additions? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion to accept as written?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Then the minutes are approved as written. Amelia, what is our first bit of business today?
Our first piece of business today is a request for a final review for construction of a new residence on a vacant lot on East College Street. This property is located on the north side of East College Street and contains approximately .18 acres. It is vacant property, is located within the historic zoning overlay, and is zoned RS Single Family Eight in the city of Murfreesboro zoning map. And upon the effective date of the City Core Overlay District Expansion, which will be January the 24th, it will also be located in the newly designed City Core Overlay District. At the June 18th, 2019, regular meeting, the Historic Zoning Commission voted to approve the request to demolish a house at 449 East College Street. The applicant is proposing to construct a new house on the now vacant parcel of the property in the historical district. At the Historical Zoning Committee meeting on October 15th, 2019, the applicant appeared before the Commission for initial input on the proposed structural design of the front elevation, which was well-received and approved to proceed by the Commission. The total living area of the new two-story American four-square-style home will be 3,277 square feet with two stories of living area. The third floor with the dormer shown on the front elevation is not to be considered living space, it is actually just an attic. The applicant has provided brochures for the exterior materials for the hardy plank, doors, windows, roofing, gutters, downspouts, lighting, fencing, and other details of the house and the garage. The applicant, Mr. Thomas Jennings, is also available to answer any questions the Commission may have. These are just a few of the homes that I'm going to show you. This is actually the vacant lot. To the left is the house when you're facing the house to the left, or the east side of the property. And then this is the empty lot to the right of the property. And then this is the house directly adjacent to the property. This is actually right across the street from the vacant land. And this is a house, one house over from that. This is two houses from the vacant property to the right. And then this is a little bit further down the street. As you see, you've got a little bit of variety of different types of home in this area on East College Street. This, of course, is the architectural layout of the house. The front, as you have seen once before. They are proposing a garage on the back portion of the property that is actually offset 10 feet from the back of the house. It's a nook back-end garage. And the layout, as you can see in this diagram, will show you that that garage is a little bit of a nook behind the edge of the side of the home. It's got the front porch. They're going to have a driveway that's going to be, I believe, asphalt with possibly some brick around the edges. Thomas could probably answer, Mr. Jennings could answer that better than I would be able to.
Planning on concrete at the moment.
Concrete.
What questions does the Commission have of the, I'm sorry, first give us your name and your address, I guess the address of the new house?
Yes.
Thomas Jennings, 449 East College Street.
What questions does the Commission have of the applicant?
I guess, Thomas, I have one question on the Fibrex. And it appears, when I own a home on East Main Street, we use Fibrex, but it wasn't a clad material, it was all a mixture of ground wood and a synthetic material. But it appears in the detail, they're talking about a clad material with Fibrex on the outside. Can you sort of enlighten us on that?
The Fibrex, it's the same, it's 40% wood and 60% PVC.
Okay.
And I think it's like 200% stronger than vinyl.
Okay, so it is the same.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I would ask, though, that in the cut sheet from Anderson, it shows something that looks like an extruded applied material. Is it just the wrong cut sheet?
Let's see. Now, it's several one for the doors. The doors have a, they're solid wood, but you have the option for an aluminum exoskeleton, so you need to go with or without. But the windows?
It says it's the Woodright Double-Hung Full Frame Window.
Okay.
And the detail shows a section through it that's clad.
Guess which section, because if, I'm looking at this on, I guess, the option B. It says for exceptional long-lasting performance, seal members are constructed with wood core and Fibrex material exterior. So I guess the wood core and the Fibrex is that, the combination?
Well, it still shows that there's the PermaShield exterior cladding product protects the frame.
And I don't know exactly where I'm looking, but I did, I just, I watched the video of the previous meeting where Fibrex was approved and chose these windows.
Well, yeah, the problem is, is that what David was describing was a solid piece, but it's a, it's a mixture. It's ground, I'm going to call it generic terms, ground-up plastic and ground-up solid us, and it's compressed into a solid member. What we see here is a clad window. It's cladding the seal and the window itself, the sash, the jam, the whole shebang. Unless I'm reading this wrong.
Yeah, I don't know, it was, it's very difficult to pick all these apart. I'm assuming the PermaShield exterior cladding. Yeah, I don't know which portion, that makes sense, but I guess I'd go, I picked the wrong cut sheet, because I intended to go with the Fibrex, exactly the same, it's been approved before. And Haynes Services, I guess, linked us to this product, because it had been approved.
What I'm wondering is that there's so many parts to this, materials and stuff, that maybe we should break this down into individual pieces, so that, because it'll make the, it'll make the motion difficult to write.
Okay.
Is that we might ought to do it. So why don't we maybe go back to the design that shows all four elevations that you presented to us, I believe. Well, I think you certainly presented the front elevation, I don't remember the sides, but any comments on the elevations? We can't really review the rear, because we can't see it from the front right of way. The sides would be difficult to see the furthest back, for instance. But does the Commission have any questions?
Chairman, one thing that I would point out, with the City Core Overlay District Regulations going into effect on Friday, the plot plan that was submitted, the front setback will be reduced, so that it's consistent with what is on that block, as opposed to meeting the 30-foot front setback. So that will, so this will actually be, the plot plan that was submitted, the structure will be pulled up to be more consistent with what's around it. I did want to make that, that point of clarification.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? The only thing I had myself as an architect, the front porch, the slope from the front of the porch to the body of a building, I can't read it, it's so small now, but it appears to be like 1 in 12, but the sides of the hip, on either the short ends of the porch, is steeper. I would highly recommend from an architectural feature that you match the front pitch, the sides to the front pitch.
Okay.
Whatever that is, because it's just going to, when it's built, it's going to look clumsy on the sides. It just means that the ridge of the hip of the porch would be closer to the windows, where it meets the body of the building. But it should match. Architecture, that's just the way we always do it, and it should match, because it looks Any other questions regarding that particular, the elevations?
I see the siding on the front elevation, am I to assume the brick is for the sides of the building, Thomas?
The brick is just the base, above the foundation.
Just the foundation, okay, so the exterior siding.
Hardy plank, yeah, the entire exterior.
Okay, good, good. And chimneys appear to be Hardy plank as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there any, should we make a motion on the elevations as they are, I guess, to our legal counsel?
You make as many motions as you want.
Okay. But the Chair would welcome a motion, then, regarding the elevations.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the elevations as submitted.
A second?
Is there any further discussion?
Oh, excuse me?
No, no, a second's appropriate. Any further discussion? Is there any acknowledgement of my comment about the porch slope, or not? That's fine, if not.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm surely going to allow it to your expertise on that, I mean, it...
Would you be willing to edit your motion?
Okay, let's say that we're approving the elevations as submitted, with the exception on the porch roof, the pitches on the side would be the same as the pitch over the porch.
Are you willing to revise your second?
Sure.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that is approved. I'm just turning to the next page, which I believe to be the site plan. The thing that, I guess, we talked about a fence, and I don't, it's not noted where the fence is, we have a submittal of the fence, but we don't know where it is.
It's very light, it was a red color, it's the...
Okay, that is the red, okay.
It's difficult to see that.
And then the driveway, then, is really not shown.
That's correct.
Can we get a revised plan on this submitted to City, and then we can do it administrative approval?
Yeah.
Regarding that, we need to know, and we need to know what the material is going to be for the driveway? Being that your garage doors are on that rear wing facing to the right, so to speak, of the plan, the backup distance and all that, be sure you account for that, getting out of the garages to come out forward on the drive. I mean, you don't have to, but if you're going to do it, make sure you consider it. I'd hate to back out that far, especially with small kids, I wouldn't do it.
We're on the same page.
Yeah. Okay, so if you revise that and resubmit that. Any questions by the Commission?
Do you intend to have a gate on the front of your driveway?
No.
Okay.
I guess, obviously, I've watched previously, it's difficult, and there are no other fences on that street. I thought we'd save some hot air blowing back and forth, and why I think it's important.
Oh, that never happens. Any, I don't know that we need a motion on that, we're going to get further clarification, so that'll, that'll be resolved at that point. The next material is the Hardy plank, and you submitted the cedar mill, which has the rusticated face to it.
Yes.
Are there any questions by the Commission regarding this? We don't review color, so we're not concerned about that. If not, then the Chair would welcome a motion on the surface of the Hardy plank as submitted?
Move to approve the use of Hardy as submitted.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we get to the columns. They are round tapered permacast, so they are a synthetic material of...
Fiberglass.
Fiberglass, so they're hollow inside? And are you going, then, with the smooth-faced column, or the fluted column?
Smooth.
Smooth. Any further questions by the Commission?
Is this a paintable product, or is it's...
I'm not sure, we intend to keep it white, so I didn't explore that.
Now, the Chair would welcome a motion on the use of the smooth-faced Tuscan columns.
Say move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Then we get to the windows, again, where it's, you're going to resubmit, as I understand?
Yeah, I'll just have to find the correct spec sheet, resubmit with the Fibrex full exterior.
Okay. Then we, the windows show several options when you resubmit. Let us know which one you want to go with. Are you intending to, I hate to keep, I'm not trying to run this meeting, but I just want to make sure we go over all the details, because it's important. The grill options on the windows, you're showing grilled windows, are you going to have the muntens on the outside, outside and inside, in the middle of the glass?
On the outside and inside, just more colonial, traditional. I know it's easier to clean if it's on the inside, but I think it looks, it's more historic.
One thing I would caution you, I have seen it where they're on both sides of the glass, but then in the middle between the glass, there's nothing. At the right angle, you can look up between them, and yes, it's more mining, I don't control your checkbook, but I highly recommend you get the inserts between the panes of glass to fill in the muntens, otherwise it looks, it looks very fake. And you're going to resubmit the windows, so we'll look at that.
So you're suggesting, suggesting that the grill will only be on the inside?
No, no, I'm suggesting, he said he wanted the muntens on the outside and inside, but you can get an insert between the panes of glass that makes it look solid, as if it's individual panes of glass. It really does make a great visual difference to do that.
You haven't led me wrong yet.
Well, there's always time. Then we're on, I guess, to the French Quarter, is it a gas light? You're doing a gas light?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions by the Commission on the gas lights?
Just thankful for that addition, that's a beautiful thing to add to your house.
They're very nice. If there's no further questions, Chair would welcome a motion regarding the gas fixture.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? If not, those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. Then we get to the metal roof, you are going with a metal roof on this?
Yes, sir.
It appears that it's submitted that there's two styles, which style are you going with?
I believe the 14-inch was standard, unless you suggest otherwise.
The only thing I'll point out to you, if you go with the 14-inch, if you see the left side of that drawing, you will have a half-inch standing seam, as opposed to the slightly smaller one in the other one, that's 16 inches. That's just a visual, it's up to you.
16-inch it is.
It's your, it's your call.
We are the least particular people that will ever stand in front of you.
So you're going to change it to the 16?
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions by the Commission?
What is the color of the roof, just for FYI?
Not sure yet. It's a slight motivation just to make it a rainbow-colored house, because we can. I'd hate to disappoint you all, so either a...
Interesting.
Either a darker color, like black or bronze, or we've considered doing it like Melanie Davenport's house with the lighter, but...
The only thing about the dark is it makes the attic hotter, you just have to ventilate it more, so it's, that's whatever you want to do.
TBD.
TBD?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further questions from the Commission regarding the metal roofing? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion on the 16-inch panel.
Make a motion that we approve the 16-inch panel profile for the roof.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is approved. We have then, we're almost there, gutters and downspouts as submitted. Any question by the Commission members?
Were they four-inch or six-inch, I didn't recall.
So that's the only thing, I'd leave it to y'all's suggestion.
My experience is you'd be much happier with a six-inch.
I wouldn't do anything but six.
Well, six-inch it is.
You'll find less need for gutter guards and things like that, whenever you have that higher capacity, it'll make life easier.
Done.
Is there any further comments or questions by the Commission to the applicant? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion regarding the gutters and downspouts.
Make a motion, we approve the six-inch gutters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item are the brackets that go under the eve of the front elevation onlys, from what I can tell, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And these are made of what, do you happen to know?
I do know, I do not know, I know it's decorative millwork, I assume it's some type of composite.
Yeah.
But there's just, there wasn't that much detailed spec sheet online at their website.
Yeah.
Waterproof MDF is probably the ideal material for that.
Are there any further questions or comments by the Commission?
Do you have a suggestion, Jim?
I'm staying out of it.
No, I welcome it. It's more entertaining every time I come here, so please.
Any further questions or comments? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion.
I make the motion that we accept the gutters as they are.
And the brackets.
And the brackets.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And let's see, we have just a couple more, then there's the garage doors. They are steel doors.
Yes, sir. I didn't know with that, if that's in this jurisdiction, because they cannot be seen from the road.
If they can't be seen, and frankly, they sit back so far, even though they're going to move the house forward, potentially, I don't know that you could really see them that well.
And especially not, the lot next to us has just been sold, and I'm assuming they intend to build in a reasonable timeframe, and that would definitely take away any possibility of seeing them.
Any questions or thoughts or comments?
Do those metal doors have a wood grain look to them, or is it pretty much just a flat panel?
Is it smooth or textured?
I think it's just a standard. Obviously, it's textured, I'm assuming they intend for the appearance to look like wood, but it's not wood.
I think with the textured siding, it makes sense.
I'm of the opinion that that's a positive, and since they're hardly visible anyway, I have no problems.
Is there any further discussion or questions? If not, the Chair would welcome a motion, not commotion, a motion, on the metal doors, garage doors as submitted?
Move, we approve the garage doors as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. I know this is belaboring, and I'm sorry, but I want to make sure we're all on the same page. Then you have a fence that's submitted. What is the height of the fence?
It'd be six feet, I believe six feet is allowed.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I don't know if that's the max height, I'm assuming so.
That is six or eight, but generally, the majority of them are six-foot, that I've reviewed.
Six feet, I would, I would think eight feet would be a little abrasive.
Privacy fence?
Yeah, just solely for privacy in the backyard.
It just becomes like a stockade look, eight feet. I've done a spiked fence eight feet tall myself, so...
I don't have anyone to spite yet on, on College Street.
Will you, will you paint this, or leave it?
No, I would just leave it.
So it'll gray out to, when it weathers?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or comments? If not, then the Chair would welcome a motion on the design of the fence.
Make a motion, we submit as approved for a six-foot fence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, without any further questions or comments, then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Then it is approved. And it looks like our last thing, there isn't end to this, are the entranceway doors. Can you describe those for us?
So those, like the exterior, the option is, is similar, it's an Anderson product, and it's a wood core, and you can have the aluminum...
Cladding.
Cladding, or not, and I'll leave that to you.
Are these all the doors, then, it's the same?
Yes, I guess the, the two, the middle and the left side door will be a fixed door, and we don't intend those to be working. And I believe you can get it in the same material for the fixed doors as the windows with the Fibrex, but I...
This looks different than the window submittal, so I think if you went with something like the doors, it would be consistent.
Okay, yeah, fair.
Is there, are there any further questions or comments by the Commission?
All of these doors are going to be under a covered porch.
Correct.
Do you have a preference already, are you going, did you prefer the wood or the metal clad?
I think the metal cladding, to me, makes sense, but I understand there's, there's an aspect of it's, wood is less, less likely to rot undercover, but it's also 20/20, and...
And, you know, we have sort of different standards, if it's an historic home versus a brand-new home, that we give more leeway to the newer homes that go up, that are in fill. And so a metal clad, we've done that before. So I think a metal clad door certainly protects the, you know, the finish will stay, you don't have to paint it or anything.
And that...
Is a bit of security.
And that's the thought process, same thing with the columns, because you go with wood columns, it's a rot, but I would prefer to use, if you want to call it the advanced technology, the possibility of the aluminum cladding, and I think it looks, and that's the same, good look, and it'll look the same for the next 20 years, at least.
Any further questions or comments? Is there a motion on the, on the doors?
Move, we approve the door as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, then that is approved. I would like to back up on the elevation of the house, meant to bring this up earlier, and I apologize, maybe too late, we've already voted, but when you first came in to look at the front elevation, I mentioned that it should not, your house should not be any taller than the one across the street, sort of a blue-gray color, four-square house. Have you had that checked to see, is this taller than, or the same size, or less than?
I checked it in a rudimentary system with a steel fish tape, so it was roughly. The house next door, the white one, it's 28 feet tall, and the one across the street, I get up to, it's 24 feet to the start of the roof, and then, I'm assuming, 10 to 12 feet from there, and we're sitting resting at 30 feet nine inches. And we're sitting resting at 30 feet 9 inches. So we're, we're below the blue house, but we're right in between, a healthy, healthy amount in between the two of them.
And the reason I ask is that we've, we've approved another house in the district that appears overwhelms. It's taller than the one next to it. And I think we all know which one I'm talking about without naming names, but it's just too tall. And so that's why I'm asking on this one if it's shorter.
Shorter.
Okay. I'll hold you to it.
I promise.
I believe that Mr. Jennings mentioned earlier about the driveway is supposed to be concrete. And I don't think that was brought up when we passed the picture.
We're going to get a drawing that shows the driveway on the site plan, and it would, it should label what the material is.
And one question, I don't know if it pertains to y'all, but the city, we currently have a shared driveway entrance.
Oh, yeah.
Which obviously, half of the driveway, the entrance that's existing is on my neighbor's yard. Will the city, do we just cut in a new, I guess, an angled entrance? I don't, I don't know how that works. Does that make sense? So if you're coming off the street, coming from street level up, there's one small entrance. And so if I cut in a new driveway, we'll essentially be to the left of the existing entryway.
In order to make any modifications in the right of way, you'd need to get a right-of-way permit from our engineering department. If you're going to widen or add an additional driveway, modify the curb cuts.
But relatively straightforward.
Any other questions of the applicant? I think we've gone through everything.
When do you expect to break ground?
I assume maybe in March, with the weather break.
After the rainy season. Exactly. Well, congratulations.
Thank you, Thomas. It looks great.
Thank you so much.
This was fun.
Do you feel like you've been grilled?
No, I feel good. I've made you happy, so you win.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Chairman Thompson, I just want to verify, the administratively approved, you giving staff the authority to approve, or do you want those sent back out in emails? Are we coming back?
I guess technically, they really ought to be emailed out to us. And if you get a majority of us approving it, then it would be equivalent to being here.
Okay, so five.
We need to get five.
Five. And Mr. Jennings, when you send those in, if you'll just compile that and send it all with one, I will forward it all to them at one time. Thank you.
Any other business today?
I have no further business, Chairman Thompson.
Does anybody in the commission have anything else? If not, the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Does that move?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did not get the brick. Thomas, if you don't mind coming forward, one last thing, we did not talk about the brick. I don't, this is a slam dunk, I don't think it's a problem. But so this brick that you mentioned, it'll be on the foundation and in the Hardy plank above. Does the commission have any issues related to the brick? And the chair would welcome a motion regarding the brick.
Move, we approve the brick that was submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We did, but I'll do it again, so move.
Do we have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Then we are adjourned.